Okay, we call the Franklin County Fiscal Court May 28th, 2020 work session to order. The first item on the agenda, I ask Ann Northcutt, Tommy Russell, to speak together on the coronavirus relief funds update that we need, we have been granted almost $1.8 million. And so Tommy and Ann, we've had several conversations going back and forth, either email or live conversations. So if you could, if you would give us a bit of an update on those funds. Ann, you can go first.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Yes, I've shared with all of the magistrates several days ago, the copy of the letter that Judge Wells received that announced Franklin County's allocation for these CRF coronavirus relief funds to assist cities and counties with response to COVID-19. We are in discussion with Department for Local Government. These are reimbursement funds being handled from the Treasury through the Department for Local Government for the Commonwealth. And they're receiving some assistance, I believe, also from Kentucky League of Cities and Kentucky Association of Counties in the formulas for how those funds were allocated and some other information. So I'm scheduled to have a discussion with DLG either tomorrow or Monday, based on their availability, to give additional guidance that I feel like we will need going forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can at this time.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, Squire Booth?
That $1.8 million is for the state of Kentucky, not just Franklin County.
No.
No ma'am, that is Franklin County.
That's just ours.
Wow.
The city's got, the city got almost $2 million, 1.9 million.
I am awestruck.
Okay, Ann, can you briefly, in the general, as general as we know at this point in time, can you kind of give us a frame of reference on, I know the letter said a few things about what you can use those monies for?
What the explanation is, the general explanation, and it goes into more detail when you go to the Department of Treasury and look at this program. The general explanation is that these are for costs or necessary expenditures incurred due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And they have to be expenses that were not accounted for in your fiscal year 2020 budget, our current fiscal year budget. They are reimbursable, so documentation showing the expenditure for expenses has to be presented in order to receive the funds back to cover those expenses.
Okay. Tommy, Russell, you want to come in and give us an update on our community as well?
Yeah, I think Ann makes a good point that the DLG, there'll probably be a lot of frequently asked questions that cities and counties have, don't know exact guidance on, and I think Ann is spot on when she needs to get with DLG to see exactly, to zero in on exactly what's expendable and if we, can we use these, these monies to plan for the second coming per se, or the surge, and I think those will probably be allowable also. Talking COVID right now, I'm trying to watch the governor as we speak. I'm sure everybody looked at the State Journal article yesterday and saw that we had 10 new cases in the county, which was the biggest, the largest number we've had so far. Without giving away too much hitless stuff, there's obviously a reference to long-term care facilities here. I did get another email just before we went live on the air that shows that we have, looks like maybe four or five new cases again, and I can't tell which ones are, I can't tell exactly where they are right now. Franklin County Public Health and Judy Maddie-McDean, they've done a wonderful job on keeping us updated. I'm sure they're, they're working really hard on contact tracing right now. And again, this just points out to everybody that we need to keep practicing social distancing and wearing masks. It's imperative that we maintain this function that the governor has set forth and the judge has asked us to do. You know, if there's going to be a second spike, you know, it's going to be when we turn everybody loose. And my observations this weekend were there were not very many masks being worn out in the public. So the uptick in cases isn't really alarming to any of us in this profession. To me, it looks like we've got maybe 35, maybe 40 cases now. And, you know, probably half of those have already been resolved and cured. We don't have any deaths, but we all know that when it gets into the long-term care facility, those people are the most vulnerable population that we have. So I would implore everyone, especially elected officials that have many outreaches to the public, to ask to maintain the social distancing and the wearing of masks just to prevent further exposures.
Okay. Any questions for Ann or Tommy related to the COVID monies? Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Judge. Little members of the court, Ann and Tommy, thank you for being with us today. Ann, can you tell us how long we have to submit those receipts for reimbursement? Will that end at the end of the calendar year, or do we have through June of 2021? Or what's the timing on that? Thank you.
At this time, the guidance that was sent out, when the allocations were sent out, says expenses incurred from March 1st through December 30th of 2020. Now Senator McConnell spoke two days ago about the possibility of additional stimulus money. And one thing I need to say, just, I'm sure all court members realize this when they read the information, but just to say for our meeting, is that this money cannot address revenue loss for local governments and for the state. And you know, that's, that's a huge concern as well these days, and that's what Senator McConnell was referring to in part, for additional stimulus monies that they are talking about that may be coming out in the next month. Right now, they're saying for this CRF money, that it's December 30th of this calendar year. What could happen, and he has mentioned this, is those requirements may end up changing depending on additional stimulus money. It could be that there may be extensions of this. It could be that they will decide that no more additional stimulus is coming out, so they want to address revenue loss in a different way. We're just going to be watching it from day to day to see what the requirements and instructions are. Right now, what they're saying is December 30th of 2020. Thank you.
Ann and Tommy, I've instructed Tamara, after Ann, you receive your information from DLG, to get a Zoom meeting with department heads and constitutional officers, to review with them what DLG is saying about these monies, hopefully, and then to come up with a priority list and then a budget, and then come back to the Fiscal Court, present you all what department heads and constitutional officers are saying to do with this money, what they're asking for, okay? So that's, that's all I know at this time. And Ann, Tommy, if you've got anything else to say, I give you the floor.
I did have a conversation yesterday, a really good conversation with Rebecca Hall from the City of Frankford, and we both agree, as well as conversations I had with some other folks, that this will probably be a topic that we'll be discussing, not just with our own folks, but we'll be discussing with people from other sectors in our community to try and determine which sectors have received funding, where the needs are, to give us more information to go on to structure a plan for these funds.
Yeah, I agree, and I didn't include them in the first part. The first round is our, I thought we ought to do a department heads, constitutional officers, and let them have a say, and then, yes, you're exactly right. Because it is all going to ultimately lead back to, these monies should be used for helping people in our community, as well as us.
I agree, Judge. I think it's imperative that we plan for the, plan for the future or the future event of this virus to be able to protect our own as well as the citizens of Franklin County.
Yep. Okay, no other questions? I don't see any other questions, or if there's not anything else, thanks. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Tommy. We're going to move on to other items, and Ann, I'm sure we'll be calling you in just a moment for some other things. Let's go to the next item on the agenda, that's authorization for approval of minutes from our regular meeting of May 15th, 2020. Are there any questions or concerns on our minutes from the May 15th meeting? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is authorization to receive the Franklin County Extension District's fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. Adam Owenberger, welcome. Thank you for being here, Adam.
There we go. Thank you very much. So I'm just presenting our budget to, our summary budget to the Fiscal Court as required by DLG. Not a whole lot has been changed, and this is just a, this is still just a draft budget. Obviously, we don't know what kind of changes are going to happen after all this with the taxes and university requirements and all that, too. But we're expecting it mostly to stay roughly about the same as this, as what was presented.
Okay, there are any, Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Judge. Adam, thank you for being with us today. I noticed one of the line items was other revenues. Can you tell us what comprises that line item? There's $6,500 in there, and it wasn't very elaborative on what was in that line item.
You know, to be honest, this summary form is auto-generated from our actual budget from university, and I honestly, I can see if I can't pull it up one moment, and I can see if something matches up real quick on it. I'm, I think this is, this is the first year I put this budget together, and I'll see if my computer will do anything, anything quickly. The 6,500.
Wouldn't happen to be interest from your monies, would it, Adam?
We, no, we don't, we don't have enough funds for that to be enough interest.
Okay.
The 706, I believe.
Oh, you already have interest earned up there, I see that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the 706 is interest earned. The, it looks like it is put in as, there's a couple, on our budget form, there's a couple miscellaneous source of income, and those would be from our omitted tax and telecom tax.
What did you say?
They'd be from omitted tangible taxes and telecom tax.
Oh, okay.
It's the way that the university doesn't allow us to change the.
Thank you, Adam.
So, yeah.
Squire Sebastian?
And there is a line item in here for interest earned, just.
Yeah, yeah, I saw it. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, Adam, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, and we appreciate the good work that the Extension Office does. Thank you. The next item is the first reading of an ordinance relating to the budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Susan, if you'd just give the highlights of the budget to the court and to the general audience.
Yes, this is a first reading, so the summary will be published by our budget categories that we have and by the 10 different funds that we have that make up the Fiscal Court budget. The grand total for all funds proposed appropriations distributed between those funds is $27,457,008, but is a decrease of $406,006 from the 2020 budget. Judge, any additional details that you would like to highlight? Until it's passed at this point, I only, I make a significant comment that we are planning a borrowing money in this budget to cover a fire apparatus and related equipment in the amount of approximately $900,000. So that will be our most significant new acquisition, and I am actually the only one in this fiscal year budget.
During the budget session, you mentioned there were 600, roughly $650,000 cut on, out of the budget for vehicles and equipment, Susan?
Yes, that's, that's only the tip of the iceberg of cuts that we made in multiple line items. The county has a very detailed line item budget, but our capital expenditures for our durable items, our equipment and vehicles that we had in 2020 budget have all been cut, and no, no prospects for that until we get into the new year and see if anything turns around. There are no CPI adjustments for any county staff allowed for in this budget, and there are multiple other areas that have been, the spending authority has been reduced and decreased and tightened up over the course of the last two months of meetings. The revenues are very, have been basically frozen, if not contracted to have some sort of very, very, very conservative estimate of what we will take in, with major contraction related to our occupational license fee, as well as the jail budget figures were, the revenue side was extremely impacted. The, as far as the virus and its impact, the gasoline tax gives us monies from county road aid and municipal road aid, and that is down by about a $90,000 estimate. And we lost some coal impact funds from a change in the state revenue policy. So there are, this 2021 budget is, is hopefully a long-term anomaly for many years to come, but it is, it's very conservative in its approach for what we anticipate receiving as well as what we are going to appropriate for operations for the coming year.
Okay, and let's, I hope all of you will agree with me and at some point say personally, give your thanks to Susan for her hard work on this budget. We are very blessed in Franklin County to have someone as good as Susan that oversees our money. And it is, I always liked this statement, and Squire Moore, you can remember this, years ago, we, we had a judge that came from the city, and his name was Robert Roach, Sr., and he would tell us, he would talk about all the great things the city had, and then he came over here and he said, oh my gosh, you all, it's wonderful what goes on here in county government, because you do so much with so little over here, and you stretch the dollar to the best you can. And I think, I think we truly do everything we possibly can to stretch the dollar as much as we can for the, for the sake of our community, our taxpayers, and to provide the great benefits that we do to all in our community. So I'm very proud, Susan, of all the work that you've done, the effort and the back and forth, and I know you've worked so hard and so many hours, and I just want to say thank you for your great work.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an amendment to ordinance number 5 to 2019 relating to the budget for the fiscal year 19 and 20. Susan, you want to talk about this amendment?
Yes, sir. The good news, in our current fiscal year is we have multiple line items that have gone over our projections for 2020. The way it's formatted, we have, in order to have any, the available use of any of those funds, they have to be amended in. The way this amendment is structured for each of the funds, for the general, the jail, and the fire funds, is for the monies to be placed in a contingency for transfer reserves and a line item that would, if needed, within those funds, would be available for a budget transfer. But the amendment process is by ordinance with two readings, which makes these revenue lines available. In some cases, in particular with the jail fund, because of a shortfall in some of the other revenue categories, we are amending an additional surplus from prior years where we have made transfers to the jail fund and then let that money accumulate. We did budget for a portion of that surplus to be used at the jail, but there are several different ways we could have gone about doing this. This was the cleanest way. We could have structured it where we had transfers, additional cash transfers in and out, but this seemed like the cleanest way to do it on bookkeeping status, to make the books balance and the, and hopefully satisfy Department for Local Government's requirements, which this does, along with the ordinance, has to go to them for review and approval to see if it is structurally correct.
Okay, questions? Squire Sebastian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Treasurer. Just wanted to double check so that I understand this. Will these funds all be placed in our reserve fund and carried forward, or will we need them, the O1 funds, the jail funds, and the insurance premium receipts? Will we need a portion of those to close out this F-line, or will they all be carried forward? Thank you, Ann Abay.
Thank you, Squire Sebastian. That's a valid question. The jail fund will require a portion of these. I didn't, we're not making that specific assignment in the amendment, and in fact, you've probably seen prior budget amendments where there are very, other specific detailed expenditure accounts that we are assigning the use of those funds. In this case, we are not. So by placing them in this contingency for transfers and reserves line item, then at a later court, perhaps next court, or even possibly, if necessary, the final court of the year, it would be necessary for Fiscal Court possibly to make a line item transfer, which is our next agenda item, I think, a budget transfer, as opposed to an amendment, which only takes the one meeting as opposed to two. So as a cautionary measure, I'm making these funds available. And as far as the general fund goes, no, it's doubtful we'll need seven, we will not need $700,000 worth. However, we do have multiple line items of revenue that were specifically budgeted X amount. For example, real estate proceeds at $200,000. Well, we didn't take in $200,000 in real estate proceeds. So that, in a technical audit sense, should be replaced, you know, you'd say, well, I'm going to do a budget amendment to zero out that line item and then increase some other line item. So by just overall making this amendment in, it's a, it's an accounting way to make sure that you have enough receipts to cover the expenditures for the year. I can tell you preliminary forecast, not just part of the Treasurer's report, but it also should tie into the amendment and to your questions, Squire Sebastian, is that we will end this year in the black overall for the Fiscal Court. So we will be banking funds as a result of the performance for the, for the current year.
Okay. Any other questions for Susan? All right, Susan, thank you. Let's move on to the next item. The next item is authorization to approve an annual standing order preapproving certain reoccurring expenses.
This is a requirement, again, by the state. We are, we have the guidance of Fiscal Court, Fiscal Court meetings that make the approval for expenditures each quarter. As you all, as you all know, when you review the bills, in between times, we have payroll and utilities for operations. Those are the items that are allowed to take place for operations between courts with the, unless we get approval for certain other exceptions. And the list that you have is the list that we've had, I believe, every single year since that we've been doing business. And I don't have the list in front of me, the Clark Miami, but the utilities and payroll are pre-formatted, but then we ask for permission for postage and debt service and some other specific line items. And elections, in this case, we wanted to be sure to capture that so that we don't have any issues for having a responsive turnaround for the people that sacrifice, you know, to do that public service.
Okay. Any questions? Squire Sebastian?
Thank you again, Judge. Susan, I just wanted to ask you a question in regard to tab six, the budget.
Okay, well, let's hang on a minute, let her get back on.
Franklin County. It seems we were able to decrease the amount in the jail deputies line item by $60,000 per visitor. So what I was trying to say was, there's a large amount in the jail deputies line item that we're going to be able to transfer out, $60,000? Wanted to kind of see how we were able to have so much remaining in that fund that we're not going to be able to use. Was that because we've had, what I would term vacancy credits from the, the lack of having staff in circle?
That would be one explanation, yes, that they've had, the jails had a revolving door of employment and the number of staff there, as well as, as well as whether or not they utilize overtime in their budget, which they had a, I think, a 5.5% allowance for or so. So that, the combination of those two made that. So that, the combination of those two made that, is going to provide an excess in that line item for the current fiscal year. You're correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The next, okay, any other questions? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is authorization to approve a memorandum of agreement between Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Kentucky Department of Corrections and the Franklin County Regional Jail for roadside inmate work crews. And I know everybody's looking to get those back. Mr. Jailer?
Yes, sir, you are correct. Thank you Court for all your hard work. This is the MOA, which is a two-year contract. We looked at the other contracts a month or so back. This is, I believe, the third one. I'd like to say thank you to the Transportation Department. Even though we haven't been going out for the last couple of months because of COVID, they still continue to pay this. So I'd like to say thank you to them.
Okay, so this doesn't, this is only, Mr. Jailer, when we do state highway work or all the work that we do?
It's state, it's a roadside through, I send a deputy out with approximately five inmates and the state reimburses the deputy's salary and benefits. They also pay the inmate for them that day, for each inmate's five dollars a day. They reimburse mileage if we use a jail vehicle. I don't know of any times that we've used a jail vehicle to do it, they provide a vehicle. This is a revenue and I'm very glad to have it.
Okay, Squier Sebastian?
Thank you Judge. Jailer, I just wanted to ask you a question to see if you could figure out or if you had some way to know when it will be apparent if the Franklin County Regional Jail can fulfill the work contracts. I mean, I don't know if you've been given guidance by the Jailer's Association or some other when there is the potential to discuss the restrictions being relaxed somewhat. So just any light you can shed on that might be helpful to us all. Thank you very much, Ina Bay.
Absolutely Squier, thank you for your question. It's a good question. Last week with the Jailer's Association, they did not talk this Tuesday because of the holiday. They, the Jailer's Association sent a request to send inmates back out to work on a limited basis and trial with some different standards. And the Department of Corrections denied it and they wanted to review it again in a couple of weeks, which will be next week. So hopefully Tuesday I'll have more answers on that. I know we're, we want to get them back out to work and help our community, but we also want to be safe. So after Tuesday, I should have some more answers for you there, but they are considering, I can tell you that. Does that answer your questions, Squier?
It does, thank you. If you could keep the court posted on that, that would be, I think, very helpful to us all. Thank you very much.
Not a problem. I will try my best to send you all an email or through Tamper or something to let you know how that meeting goes.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Yeah, we look forward to this, Mr. Jailer, to getting these types of crews out on the roads again.
Just one other note too, I spoke with the Class D coordinators here recently and, you know, our concern is the number of inmates. And they believe right now, if we go back to work very soon, we have enough state inmates to fulfill our contracts. That's been a concern and I believe we're okay right now.
Okay, good, good. Thank you for that. Thank you. That's important to know. All right, seeing no other questions, thank you, Mr. Jailer. The next item is authorization to approve a contract with the Franklin County Health Department for providing preventative services to our county employees. Tamper, can you speak to that?
Yes, this is a renewal of our previous contract. This contract covers the fire department physicals and the vaccines. The vaccines are mainly utilized by the jail. We typically spend around twelve thousand dollars a year for fire department physicals and about three thousand dollars a year for the vaccines for the jail employees.
Okay, any questions on that? Squier Sebastian?
Thank you Judge. From what I saw, that this contract is not to exceed six thousand. So are we anticipating fewer physicals or less work for the health department to do for us? Thank you.
Can you answer that?
Nope. As far as I know, this is a renewal and I believe what, so last year was the first year that we actually combined the contracts. In previous years, we've had a contract with the jail and a separate contract for the fire department and they were identical contracts, so it may be that that part was overlooked. But last year, we combined these contracts and it's just a renewal of that same agreement.
Chief, can you speak to it? Do you have anything to say about it?
I can Judge. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
We have traditionally put that out for quotes, competitive quotes to make it fair. And we, every two or three years, we continue to put that out there. The health department is very competitive. They have done a wonderful job, especially last year, the last time that we did the physicals and we were very pleased. So that's, if it shows one figure and it says another, it's because we have not always chosen to go with that contract. We look at what is competitive and they are.
Okay, I think that answers the six thousand. Squier Sebastian?
Thank you Judge. Should we just verify before we approve this agreement that all of the terms that we need are in it? Or do we anticipate having to amend something that we are agreeing to that's half of what we normally spend on this? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Okay, who does this contract, Tamper? Is it?
The health department.
Health department?
It's answered to us.
Okay, so Chief, I guess, can you verify that these are, that these physicals are what you need? Does it include everything that you would need for physicals?
These, the physicals for the fire service are very specific and in depth. They are NFPA compliant and it goes from A to Z. Very extensive evaluation of a firefighter's health from one year to the next. OSHA compliant, Hazwafer compliant. So yes, they do fit the bill. We sent the permission over and they checked those boxes off.
It's the same thing from last year. So this was the same thing from last year and we didn't. We haven't changed the budget for that, so I think it's, I think it's fair to say that this will cover it.
So we're saying that this is going to cover the, what we need at the fire department as well as the jail, right? Because that's what I heard earlier. Because I wasn't asking any questions about the validity of the actual physicals or anything. I'm trying to ensure that we have enough, that the scope of the contract and the price for the contract includes everything that we need done. I just want to make sure that was complete.
That was my question too. It didn't come out maybe quite like you said it, but that, this, the two hundred fifty dollars per person for a firefighter, firefighter fiscal is all that is needed. That was my question, is there, were there any other parts to it? And it doesn't, and the chief said no, so that will cover it. So this is the same thing that was in there last year. As a matter of fact, I don't know, it just depends on what happens, I guess, probably with, hopefully we don't lose a whole lot of firemen. Hopefully a lot of firemen, if our firemen will stay on and our jail staff will be, will be okay. Squier Muller?
Thank you Judge. I think I follow what Squier Sebastian's saying. Just running the numbers here, I mean, if you just do physicals only, it's twelve thousand dollars. So I think she's just wanting to make sure we have enough money in that line.
Are all firefighters given a physical? Chief? Or new?
Judge, that is correct.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
That is correct. All firefighters go through that. We must track it according to our Hazwafer, which is hazardous materials technician. It's a requirement, as is a requirement to hold onto those records for thirty years after they retire. We also give new hire physicals, which are very, every bit as extensive or more than the annual firefighter physicals.
Okay.
So yes, it's about twelve thousand dollars, as Tamper said, for firefighter physicals and then the additional new hires.
But that's my point, there's not enough money in line item.
Okay, well, I'm sure there's an answer.
I'm not sure.
We'll look for the answer for that.
I was just saying, oh my God. So again, I was saying, if it takes into consideration the fire department, there's not enough money to cover that. But it also said it covers the jail. And I'm wondering if it's going to cover CDL physicals that are needed for the road department, should we need those? So I'm just not sure. I'm just trying to make sure that we, the county, are being observant of these agreements and making sure they're covering everything we need from a financial standpoint as well as a process standpoint. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And this was the amount that was done last year, so obviously there was, it worked out last year. And, but we'll pull it from the agenda and I think, I think you're concerned about it. We'll just pull it from the agenda and Tamper, I ask that you make sure this is clarified, talk with Judy or whatever, and we'll get it on the nineteenth agenda. So I think.
This is Rick and maybe I'm understanding the question wrong. Is the squires concerned not for the services to be rendered, but to ensure there's a sufficient amount up to twelve thousand dollars in the line item?
Or more. She's not sure twelve thousand is even.
Correct, Rick.
Okay, well, I just want, before, from my end, I mean, I reviewed it, I didn't get into the performance terms because I don't know what firemen and whatever need. But certainly going back to curate, I just wanted to clarify so you know what the cure is going to have to be. Look, it's a matter of just remittance to say not to exceed twelve five. That's an easy cure to do as opposed to delay and then do it.
Again, the contract, that's.
If it's a budget thing, then that's another story. So that's why I was just trying to clarify that.
Susan, let me ask you a question. Susan, I'm going to bring you, where was this money in, what line was this money in, in this past year's budget? In this budget this year?
Tamper, can you answer that?
I believe professional, professional services for the jail, I know for sure. I'm not sure, Chief, do you have your own line for this that you take it out of? I'm thinking he takes it out.
We do.
Yeah, his five, six, nine line.
We do.
Okay.
Comes out of.
So it's two different lines.
Training. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It comes out of the training line. I don't have those numbers with, it comes out of that line item.
It's five, six, nine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Yes, I do see that in the details on the chief's budget for hundred hours annual certifications and physicals. Yes, thank you, big chief.
And that would seem to be, that would seem to be an easy cure by just changing that description not to exceed the amount that you all think it's going to cost to do.
I'm not sure.
All I'm saying is the contract specifically states it's not to exceed six thousand for a variety of services that we're, I guess, unsure of what the variety of services are now, sounds like.
Okay, well, that's a different thing. I was just trying to avoid a redo if the matter is to reflect that it's to cap out at twelve. If it changes, that's one thing. If it's to go back, change the actual services to be provided, that one I can't speak to.
The services provided, I'm, those are very clear. Those are vaccines and physicals. We spent fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars last year in total, last fiscal year, for this exact same contract and it is only for vaccines and physicals.
Okay, so I think we'll just pull it and we'll get it clarified and bring it up on the nineteenth and make sure. If we spent that and it says not to exceed six, there's a reason and we'll find out what that reason. And I don't think that, no one is asking to change any of the services. We just want to make sure there's enough money in there to pay for the services. So I think it's very, it's very legitimate to see that six thousand, fifteen thousand, six is only half of, part, close to half of the fifteen. So we'll, we'll bring it back up on the nineteenth. We'll just, so this item will be removed from the agenda and we'll, we'll check on it and bring it back on the nineteenth. The next item on the agenda is authorization to approve a memorandum of understanding with Columbia Southern University for Learning Partnership Online Program. Now Chief, this is for fire department and I believe other employees too. They're offering a free college education. Is that what it is, sir?
Well, I wish it was free, sir, but it is a reduced tuition. With a ten percent discount if we are a learning partnership with them, learning institution.
Okay, and I remember this a couple of years ago and I thought there were some, there were some scholarships or something, but anyway. Was there, why did we go with this, Chief? Why would we, why did we sign up to go with a Columbia Southern University for Learning Partnership Program? Was, there was a reason and I can't remember why specifically for this program?
We chose, if you recall, we chose to go down the road of partnering with a local university, which is still great. If our guys can take advantage of that KSU. With our work schedule, twenty-four on and forty-eight off, you can, you can almost guarantee two out of three weeks, you're going to miss a class or you'll have to take vacation to take that class.
And this is through Kentucky State?
Well, I'm just saying, we have an agreement right now. I believe Judge, if you recall, it seems like it was a fifteen percent reduction in tuition because we're county government in full weeks.
Yeah.
But this Columbia Southern is a online, which specializes in fire service and offers degrees that could be very valuable to Franklin County.
Okay. All right. Squier Muller?
Thank you Judge. I guess this is for Rick. I believe what I read through this with the contract, it says this partnership never ends unless we end it or they end it. Do you see any problem with that just as far as, you know, agreeing to something that's going to be in years to come?
The beautiful part about it is, and I guess, I guess that's a valid concern on any correspondence school, it's not really a partnership per se. If you'll take a look at what the terms is, they're offering certain services for a correspondence class, online university classes under their accreditation. And it continues from their end in that it doesn't stop. That is, they won't cancel without your scholarship, or not your scholarship, your discount. So the only time it would terminate is if you decide to terminate it, in which case it just kicks the full price back. It's, I guess they get some benefit number wise, like any other university would. And the county gets a ten percent, ten, ten percent discount on tuition by signing up for them. The trade off then is then that they can brag and say, you look at us, you know, Franklin County's doing it. The only thing I could see the consideration back was you take their class and you give, they give a ten percent discount. They get the numbers and they use it some for publicity, advertising what agencies use their, their program, et cetera. There's no harm by keeping it, extending it indefinitely as long as they do it. The county employees who do it get a ten percent discount and it's not exclusive. It would be allowed to other employees too.
Judge, if I could chime in, the chief sent it to me also to review, this is Ann. What, another benefit is not only the ten percent discount, but the application fee is waived and the textbooks are provided.
That's right.
For free, which if you pay. ...for free, which if, if you've had anybody in college recently, you know that that's a huge savings. It doesn't preclude anyone from taking courses at another institution, but this distance learning, as the chief said, is going to be so valuable for his folks with the kinds of schedules that they have. And, uh, we don't know what, uh, higher education is going to look like in, in even the near future, but, uh, distance learning may be a very important part of it. I think this is a great opportunity for the fire department.
Thank you.
I think, I think, I think higher education's gonna look exactly like this in the future, whether the state or local level. Just having experienced it with, with my kids and your all's kids, if you all have seen it, the university level, even the school levels, it's all been distance learning since March.
Chief, has anybody, has any fireman used this program since it's been in place?
I actually, well, it's not in place yet, but I've actually been personally evaluated. You know, I'm fifteen hours short of a bachelor's degree, which means nothing to me at my age, but, uh, these young guys that are up and coming, you know, when you, when you put an individual with, uh, equal talents and equal skills and one of them has that degree, guess what? You know, that's, that's the individual most likely that will step into that slot, fair or not. Um, you know, a degree means something. In this world, it should. You know, I'm not, I'm not bashing degrees, but, uh, um, you know, if you have to have equal individuals and one of them has that, uh, accolade of a degree, uh, that will be your choice. And I would like to give, uh, you guys the opportunity in the future to, uh, to say, hey, we have someone being housed that has that degree.
Uh, Squire Tracy?
Scotty, Squire.
Squire Tracy?
Um, yeah, thanks, Judge. Uh, Chief, thanks for, thanks for working on this. I just want to make sure that there are a couple of things clear. This not only, uh, includes the fire department, but it includes other county employees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay. And then it also states that spouses and children of employees can take advantage of this program, correct?
Which is a great thing for Franklin County Physical Court and government.
That's correct. So that would be it. Okay, that's, okay. I just want to make sure. So this would be, uh, uh, I guess what I would say is this would be great partnership, learning partnership.
I, I honestly, when it presented to me, and this is Rick again, that I saw no downside of it for those inclined to go in that direction.
Uh, so Chief, once again, I might ask this question. I'm sorry, I, I asked it the wrong way. Do we have any firemen at this time that are taking online classes or taking classes to, to, uh, to extend their education?
Judge, at this time, I cannot, uh, confirm or deny. I can tell you that we do have firemen that have taken online courses on their own, not through Columbia Southern...
Okay.
...uh, but through other entities to, uh, try to pursue their, their degree.
Good, okay. Okay, that's great. That's what, I just wanted to know that, that they are out there trying to, to get, improve their education, so...
Absolutely. I can tell you that I've got several credits myself under my belt, um, OSHA thirty, several others, uh, that, uh, you know, I needed, and that was the only way I could get them.
Uh, so John Mitchell, are, are you aware of this? Are there any programs under this Columbia Southern University that would be applicable to, uh, the road department?
I didn't even know it was a thing, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Uh, I haven't seen anything about it.
Okay. So, uh, I know that your guys take a lot of, uh, courses, and I know they're offered in different at venues, but, but, uh, it, it, it could be helpful to your all's crew as well. Okay, are there any other questions about Columbia Southern? Seeing no other questions? Let's move to the next item on the agenda. The next item is authorization to approve, uh, an expanded jurisdiction program agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Housing, Building and Construction. And boy, this has been a long time in coming. Um, it was two thousand and seventeen, and we, uh, approved that, uh, the, the past physical court approved to, uh, to go after this, and three years later, we're hearing from the state. Robert, the exciting times. Talk to us about it.
Thank you, Judge, given court. So, um, this agenda abstract is to authorize the judge executive to execute the expanded jurisdiction program agreement. Uh, as you, as you mentioned, back in, uh, October thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, Resolution Number Thirty-Six was approved by the fiscal court, authorizing you to make that application. Uh, the Department of Housing, Building and Construction does recognize building inspection program in Franklin County, and we do currently have a Level Three Building Inspector on staff. Um, if approved, this expanded jurisdiction will allow for us to provide local plan review and the inspection services that are otherwise being performed by the Kentucky Department of Housing and Building and Construction. The advantage to this is multifaceted. It, there had been a, a, uh, an interest for many years with both elected officials, community leaders, and those throughout the community, for us to be more business friendly, for us to expedite the process for plan reviews and inspections and, and to get projects moving quicker. Uh, me and my staff feel as though, based on, on our experience and certifications, that we can provide this pro, this, uh, program faster than the state can, since we're only going to focus on our county as opposed to a hundred and twenty. Um, and the advantage is that we can, uh, provide this service with, with same fees that the state is, is, uh, charging, but yet in fact can reduce those fees by two hundred dollars, because we would not be, uh, charging the local fee that we, that we had previously on our fee schedule. So, uh, it has been a long time coming. Uh, all the elements are in place. The last thing to execute this is the judge's signature. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Robert, let me ask you a question, uh, for, for explanation's sake, and for just the general public in, uh, that is watching. What is the, where does the state come in now? Um, is it over ten thousand square foot of building, and ten thousand, ten thousand square feet and under? Um, is that where the county, uh, does the inspections? And over ten thousand, it's, uh, the state doing it? I, I'm not sure, uh, exactly the criteria, but if you would, explain that to the public.
Yes, sir. So the threshold for the state's jurisdiction in general terms is if a building is over ten thousand square feet in size and/or its occupancy load is greater than one hundred, that is a mechanism for the state to take the jurisdiction. It also requires jurisdiction for all high hazard occupancies, uh, institutions such as schools and hospitals, as well as any state-owned or leased facility. So in general, that, that's how that is determined.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes, uh, Robert, I know you've been looking for this before this court, uh, came in, and, and I know I've called a lot of folks on it, and I'm, I'm glad it's something that we're getting to. But, uh, could you explain a little better, uh, for me and for the folks in the community? You did say it doesn't do institutional buildings, educational buildings, uh, family human services, state or leased buildings, high hazard. What, what buildings do fall into this category that will be gaining, uh, the ability to, to inspect them?
So, uh, examples would include, um, say, say there's a, a commercial restaurant, let's say there's retail shops, um, industrial warehouses, large-scale office buildings, things of that nature.
Good question, Squire.
Thank you, Robert.
Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge, and, uh, thank you, Robert. Hey, a couple of quick things. Um, do you know of any other counties that have the ability to do this right now, uh, you know, individually? And then my next question would be, do you know what kind of fees were collected, let's say, last fiscal year from the state in Franklin County for inspections?
Yes. Back in two thousand and seventeen, uh, and I'm providing the same information I provided the court back then. Um, and, and I had difficulty locating an updated list for those communities with expanded jurisdiction in preparation for this meeting. But I can run down some of these, uh, just to give you an idea. Now, there are currently twenty-seven, or at the time, there were twenty-seven jurisdictions, okay? So I'll just run through a few of them. Louisville Metro, uh, Golden Green, Elizabeth Town, Newport City, uh, Paducah, Richmond, uh, Berea. So these are just a sample, a small example of those communities that were granted expanded jurisdiction by Housing, Building and Construction. So, uh, at this time, I'd like to ask Andrew to do a screen share. Um, and Andrew, if you would, could you provide the court with the, uh, with the two thousand and seventeen building permit revenue expanded jurisdiction PDF that I provided you?
Yes, sir. Just give me a second here.
All right. So once again, court, this is what was provided to the court back in two thousand and seventeen, based on actual projects that were submitted and permitted through our office. These projects that you see are going to range from the years two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. What the building inspector did in this analysis was he, uh, projected the cost per square foot fee associated with these, these projects, but as you can see in the asterisk, did not include the additional fees that we would feature, collect in the future for fire alarm and sprinkler systems and hood systems if applicable. So, uh, this is just a, 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 a portion of the, the revenue that could be generated. So in two thousand and fourteen, in this case, you would see that the fees purely based on the square footage cost is a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty. Andrew, could you scroll down to two thousand and fifteen, please? You'll see that the revenue would have been eighty-eight thousand, two ninety-four, and then in two thousand and sixteen, it went down slightly, down to fifty thousand, three twenty-two. So in, in these real case examples, the county only received a flat two hundred dollars for each one of these projects, and then the state received the square foot cost revenues plus our, our alarm inspection, sprinkler systems, hood systems, and light. Did I answer your question?
Squire, Squire Tracy?
Yeah, and, and, uh, I was hopeful for a little bit more current information. Um, Robert, what do you think this is going to do? We hear a lot with, uh, planning and zoning as far as, uh, maybe understaffed's not the right word, but, uh, what do you think this would do to the workload? And how many inspectors do you have on staff that are certified to do these, this type of certification?
So this would definitely increase the workload. Uh, there is only one, uh, inspect, one, one Level Three Building Inspector on staff currently. In two thousand and seventeen, it was presented to the court that the building inspector anticipated that, uh, based on the additional workload, assuming a certain amount of workload, that he could, um, get by with the assistance of a part-time inspector. And with that, on other smaller projects, such as some single-family home construction and maybe perhaps some small commercial projects. Uh, but once again, it's all dependent on, on the workload.
Thanks, Judge. Robert, the, the charts that you showed, um, it looks like the, the projects were, were decreasing from fourteen to fifteen. It looks like they were going down. Um, would it be possible to get more accurate information to where we could see exactly what's been coming in? I think we're all aware of the fact that, uh, those big, those big projects, um, especially during these times, uh, I don't see it in the near future, but, um, at the last meeting, you made mention that, uh, that if this was to be agreed to, that that position would be a pri, be primarily an administrative position? Uh, if that's the case, do you think one part-time employee is going to be able to handle the workload of buildings, of inspecting buildings?
Uh, let me start with, with the, the activity portion of your question first. I think, um, and, and we can, can lean on the treasure on this a little bit. I believe in your budget packet, you'll see within the revenue line item, she had budgeted approximately, uh, Susan, was it ninety thousand revenue for this year, for, for this, this past fiscal year? But yet in fact, the revenues have come in at a hundred and ninety thousand. So activities did...
That's not, Robert, that's not what I asked, Robert. That's, that's not what I asked. I'm sorry, but that's not what I was asking. What I was asking was, is if this passes, and this position is, is mainly an administrative position, would one part-time inspector be able to handle the workload? Would, would, would one part-time position be able to handle the workload if this position that we're talking about is mainly an administrative position, which would be in the office? That, that's what, that's the question I'm asking.
Okay. The Level Three Building Inspector would not be an administrative position as a plan reviewer and a field inspector. Uh, no other, uh, unless there's another builder, a Level Three Building Inspector on staff with the county, no one else would be able to inspect those and/or do plan review for those projects. Um, if, if my building inspector at the time of that workload felt as though a Level One part-time inspector would be adequate, uh, to handle the additional workload while, while he inspected and did plan review on the larger project. So I can only rely on that. So he said yes, part-time would be. Now, I do have the building inspector available in this meeting. If you, uh, if he would like to, uh, to address that question, Mr. Parrot, if you would mind unmute Mr. Owens?
Uh, believe he's already...
He's unmuted.
Okay. Mr. Owens, do you have a comment based on the workload and part-time inspection consideration?
Well, the workload, uh, we would have to see how it goes. The, uh, workload right now, uh, I should be able to handle that, and then, uh, we'll see if we need a part-time inspector, but probably in the future, uh, when things pick back up on, uh, or change a little bit, then a part-time inspector would probably be needed. I mean, we're, we're still very, very busy, but, uh, I think, uh, starting out with this, uh, if I can handle it fairly well, and then we'll see where that goes. But I think a part-time inspector in the future probably would...
So, Mr. Owens, this is Judge Wells. First of all, welcome. Glad you're here to take questions. Thank you for what you do. Um, any projects that are already being, uh, are under the state jurisdiction and not expanded jurisdiction would be, if this starts in July, they would continue to be under the state jurisdiction. Is that correct?
Yes, anything that's already started under state jurisdiction stays there. And, uh, the, uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, see, Squire Booth, you had a question?
Oh, I, I wanted...
Somebody's gonna take her off.
I wanted to apologize for my double appearance and ask Andrew to remove one of them, please. Thank you.
Andrew, would you remove the fake Marty Booth and keep the real Marty Booth on?
If I can figure out which one's fake, Judge, I'll do that.
Okay.
Either one will do.
All right.
I think if he removes the one that has the speaker muted.
Okay. All right. Squire Muller, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Judge. Hey, Robert, one other question. Um, I'm big into cross-training and things like that. Concern to me a little bit is that we have one inspector that's certified.
Thank you.
So let's say we agree to this contract and, uh, if Mr. Owens is on the line, uh, if Greg decides for two months to retire, let's just throw that out, because you never know what's gonna happen in life. Where would that put us?
Uh, we could request assistance from, uh, Kentucky Department of Housing, Building and Construction. We could request assistance from Kentucky Department of Housing and Building and Interior.
Could I speak up?
Yes, yes, Greg, go ahead.
Yes, well, yes, that could happen, but right now, we have one building inspector, me, so that could happen tomorrow. So I would hope that that wouldn't hold us up from getting this expanded jurisdiction.
If, I think the contract says, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, that it only is valid as long as we have a certified Level III building inspector that are qualified or whatever. It must, we must have that before this is a valid contract, right? And if we don't, then that means we have, it's an invalid contract.
You are correct. The state does require their level certification, and they will monitor our program to ensure compliance on our part with administration of the program.
Hey, Robert, do you know how many Level III inspectors there are, let's say, in central Kentucky? I mean, I'm sure a Level I inspector is a lot easier to come by. I'm just trying to figure, I don't want us to get in bad spot.
Mr. Owens, can you answer that?
I couldn't give you a number on that. It's a lot less than the Level I, just like you're referred to. There's, I don't know the number.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Okay.
Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Judge. I was gonna ask the same question Squire Muller did, so I appreciate him getting that out there. Because I'm looking at it, I've-
Squire Sebastian, you're not, we're not hearing you. Okay, we can't, we can't hear you, Squire. All right. Okay. We're, can't hear you. All right. Are there any other questions concerning this expanded jurisdiction? Squire Tracy? Squire Tracy? Squire Tracy? Squire Tracy?
I was just trying to let her finish, Judge.
Well, she wasn't coming through.
Okay. Yeah, just a couple of things. I would really like, three, you know, over the last three years or four years or so, there's a lot of things that's happened. We've had businesses closed, we've lost the civic center, I could go on and on. I'd really like to see some more accurate numbers. And then also, I can't, I can't seem to shake that, you know, it wasn't several months ago that we had something come in front of us and had some employees that could save the county thousands and thousands of dollars, and we couldn't come to an agreement on those mechanic positions. So I'd really like to see some more accurate numbers closer to what we're dealing with now as far as the buildings. And that's where I'm at.
Mr. Owens, thank you for being on. Do you know of projects that are going on right now that are part of this? That the state's doing? I guess the question is, as a building inspector, you know that the state's doing some of these inspections. So can you give us some idea on some of the projects that are going on? I think that Squire Tracy, he wants to know what's on the horizon. We don't know what's on the horizon, but you do know what is going on at this present time. Can you answer Squire Tracy's question?
I can, I did the projection for 2017, and the fees that were collected by the state was thirty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Well, that's the fees without including sprinkler and fire alarm hood suppression. 2018, we collected thirty-nine, six, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eleven. And I have misplaced 2019, I apologize for that. But it's staying around thirty-five, forty thousand. And I do know I was contacted by a couple of engineers that were doing some work with, I'll just say, one of the skillries that I know there's some projects in the pipeline that's not hazardous material and there's some other things in the pipeline too. So that's about the best numbers I can give you on that. I did do those 2017 and 18, though.
Okay. Squire Moore?
What's the process of backing out of this if we don't have a good outcome in it?
Robert, can you answer that?
I believe we can request that HPC take it back. I believe Mrs. Sparks might be able to address that.
That's correct. If the county doesn't have the appropriate engineer, and I guess just for precision's sake, you said the contract is invalid, the contract can be reformed. But what this agreement does, it allows the county to be more of a one-stop shop in terms of inspections.
That's right.
And I think it's being viewed as maybe more complicated than it really is. Because the county can come in and inspect these buildings that would otherwise require a separate level of inspection, et cetera, delay projects, and just another level of bureaucracy when you've got the same qualified inspector. If there isn't a qualified inspector, or you don't have personnel, et cetera, then we notify them that those aren't available, then they go back and do their original jurisdiction. They always retain original jurisdiction. This just allows the appropriate, appropriately trained and certified inspectors who work for the county to do the very same job. So don't get lost in the weeds on that issue. It's still going to be the same level of inspection, it's still going to be the same detail, it's going to be the same precision and professionalism. Just the county's going to be able, if agreed on, the state would yield their exclusive jurisdiction to concurrent jurisdiction to the county to allow them to do it.
Great points. Thank you, thank you, Counsel, appreciate that. Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. I just want to get to the financial impact. This is obviously going back to a different court in 2017. So I'm trying to get my hand around this. Was the increase for this financial impact, is that something that we proposed? I guess, Robert, that would be a question to you, or where did that come from? Just because, like I said, it's from a different court, so I'm trying to catch up there. Thank you.
You're talking about the eleven thousand dollars increase in our inspector's salary?
That is correct. The way I'm looking at it, that's a third of what we're taking in, so I'm trying to figure it out.
I believe what we looked at, Greg and Robert, and I'll speak a little to this, and then I'll ask you all to chime in, and that is, we looked at what a Level III building inspector made with the state and across Central Kentucky, as well as in other jurisdictions of these guys that are doing it. And I believe, Greg, you thought that was the average salary of those employees. Correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, you and Greg speak to that.
Yes, thank you, Judge. This was presented to the compensation committee on several occasions. Salary ranges from chief building inspector to Level III certification was researched from Richmond, Moon County, Hopkins, Elizabeth Town, Fayette, and Nelson. Compensation committee met in both July and August of 2017 and made a recommendation to the county court for a salary of sixty-six thousand, three hundred. One thing that's important to recognize is that while there, this place has expenditure for personnel, there is a revenue side to this as well. I have an example and exhibit, and if the court would like to see that.
Squire Sebastian, you had your hand up?
I'm gonna try it again.
Okay.
So my question earlier had to do with, have we investigated the option of bringing in individuals on a contract basis? Should there be any, I think Squire Muller brought up, if somebody retired or left, or, because I think we need to have that waiting in the wings. And I'm also going to be on the we're giving potentially, or I think it's being requested in this, a substantial salary increase when we're not able to get the, either staff are taking on additional jobs and responsibilities right now. And also another part-time employee is being included in here. So that's a pretty substantial bump for us that is a question mark.
Susan, is there money in there? I didn't think we put any money in there for, as a matter of fact, his salary's not in the budget, and neither is a part-time employee in the budget.
No, there's no, there's nothing in the 2020 or 2021 budget for the expanded jurisdiction. This is a separate action line item that would change, you'd have to change the budget next year after you get into it.
Okay. So, Jada, Squire Blackburn, did you have something?
I do think it's a wonderful thing that we're able to finally get the state to agree with the expanded jurisdiction. It does create revenue. I think it's a good thing. I know Robert's been pulling for this for a long time. There are some questions of what revenue it will draw. It will come out in the black, I think, no matter how we look at it. And I think it also helps, I think it helps the process. When we have developers come in and everyone stop shop, and we can build relationships with them. And I think it makes us more friendly to come to and work with.
Well said, Squire, I appreciate you saying that. Business-friendly. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, let's go to the next one. Thank you, hey, Greg Owens, thank you for being on. The vote will be coming in a few minutes, so if you want to stay on. And, hold on. Squire Sebastian, do you have something? If we can hear you, we're not hearing you very well. We're not hearing you at all, now. We're not hearing you.
Yes, I do feature, I want to be on what we're voting on. Are you hearing me now?
You're asking us what we're voting on?
Does she have an agenda?
Do you have an agenda in front of you?
Yes, are we voting on?
The item is number, uh-
Oh. Yes, I do, Judge.
Okay.
But no, that's not the question. The question is, is there are multiple things inside this item, and it demonstrates a financial impact because it gives an employee a salary bump, and it also talks about a part-time employee, possibly. So I don't, I would like to see those things separated out. So while I could be for the expanded jurisdiction, I don't necessarily know that I could be for giving a salary bump to one employee out of everybody else, and then potentially hamstringing another court, us, next year to bring on another part-time employee, which those have been in question throughout our entire budget discussion.
Okay. So, Tamara, I want you to, Tamara and Susan, I want you to elaborate. From what I understand, that the court, the previous court approved the salary of sixty-six thousand to reflect what Level III inspectors would make. And it would only go into effect when this is approved and the state has approved it. There was only a request in there that at some point in time, the court consider a part-time employee if that is needed. So that would have to come back to the court, and it would be based on Greg Owens and the business and all kinds of great things that are happening. And if that's happening, I think it would be a very positive thing. But there's no commitment by this court or by any other court that said we have to have a part-time employee. Am I correct on that, Tamara?
What is on the agenda is authorization to approve the agreement, the expanded jurisdiction program agreement. That's what the authorization is, that's what will be reflected in the minutes. If authorization is approved, the agreement that is attached will be signed by the judge, sent back to the state, that will have to be approved also by the Attorney General's Office, filed with the Secretary of State and the County Clerk's Office to become effective.
Squire Sebastian, you raise your hand again, you want to say something? We'll do our best to hear you, Squire.
Yes, sir. Y- yes, sir. I'm looking back in this abstract that was included from 2017, where it says the position title will be acting chief building official. So I'm not sure that's not reflected as part of the current document. So I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, if this abstract that we have in front of us only authorizes this court to enter into the agreement with the Housing Buildings Commission, once that happens, then does that obligate us to go back and create this acting building official and then give this salary adjustment? I just want to make sure, because there are multiple things attached here. Some of them have to do with the electrical inspector, which has nothing to do with this position. So there's quite a bit in this part of the packet that I just want to make sure we all understand. Thank you.
So when the agreement was presented to us from the state, the attachments that you see with the other interlocal agreement was attached to, as it's referenced in here. The abstract from the October 2017 court was only supplied to you all for informational purposes, along with ordinance eight, two oh one seven, informational purposes as well, to show you that we had already adopted the state building fees into our system. The only thing that you are voting on will be authorization to enter into the expanded jurisdiction agreement. In October, when the court authorized the judge to apply for the application to start this process, there were three actions total in that court meeting. One was to reclassify Mr. Owens and provide him with a salary increase, which at that time, he could have taken, but he opted to wait until we were approved for the expanded jurisdiction program, because as you can see in that, it authorizes that salary at that time. The second action was the fees, the second, first reading of the fees, because it's an ordinance that takes two readings. So we had the application-
Is that 2017 you're talking about?
In 2017, yes. So there were three actions in that court meeting pertaining to this agreement. So today, you're only approving to enter into the agreement. Did that explain it?
JW, I mean, Squire Blackburn, sorry.
Yes, sir.
I thought you wanted it, I thought you-
Squire Sebastian, you're correct. This is the third step that upon satisfaction will complete the first two, or complete the action to have concurrent jurisdiction. The two prior ones was the reclassification of the schedule, that's why you're looking at the 2017. As you can see from the abstract, it clearly reflects that once the the third key is inserted, for lack of a better word, and concurrent jurisdiction satisfied, that's from an acting to a chief building inspector position, and the salary is eligible to be kicked in. I think that was your question.
Squire Muller?
Okay, so Rick, just, I want to make sure what we're voting on is right. So if this course is passed, the salary automatically goes into effect, is that right? I just want to make sure what I'm voting on. I just want to make sure what I'm voting on.
Automatically is a really big word, but there were three steps to accomplish this. Uh, and this is the third step the state's finally made approval. I, I, uh, that's, that's over on the H R Treasury side as to when salary adjustments are made. But the active position, there's no reason to have an active position at this point because everything's been approved. All the prerequisites to have a program running have been satisfied. So when it would be effective, that's, that's an executive call. But there were three steps and this is the third.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Squire Blackburn?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would, I would recommend that, uh, it, it becomes active when they get their first state, uh, inspection. If that makes sense.
Did the salary, uh, is that what you're saying? What?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, what, what, uh?
That's not what we're voting on though.
But yeah, but that's not what we're voting on, but that, that, we could do that if that's what you, you want. Squire Moore?
Yes, that's exactly what I was thinking too, that once we start using this, would be the time for that to kick in.
Yeah. Yep.
But I think this is something that's, that's very much needed so that we can be a one-stop shop.
Yeah, uh, absolutely. I'm sorry. Somebody was saying something we couldn't hear.
It was Ron.
Robert, couldn't hear you?
Yes, sir. Judge, in prior meeting, you asked me to provide the court with a fee comparison relating to this. May I present that at this time?
Sure.
Mr. Timman, would you mind sharing the screen with the exhibit I prepared? Label twenty twenty.
Just a second. Uh, this is what you want me to do?
Yes, sir. Please tag the sheet two.
Okay.
So when I've done here, I was asked to provide a fee summary based on, uh, jurisdictions nearby. So when I've done that, provided information specific to their fee schedules, including Anderson County, Shelby County, Northtown Scott County, Versailles Midway Woodford County, as well as the city of Franklin. This scenario provides a fee summary comparison of an industrial facility of fifty thousand square feet based on the current we have adopted fee schedule for all these jurisdictions. So as you can see, Franklin County, number one, we receive two hundred dollars. Anderson County, which has adopted the fee schedule within the Kentucky Building Code, receives seven thousand five hundred dollars. Shelby County, the same, seven thousand five hundred. Northtown Scott County has a hybrid fee system in which they would receive ten thousand dollars for this project and that's based on their flat fee of a hundred dollars per square foot of the building along with some other administrative fees including fuel and such. Midway, Versailles and Woodford County, uh, would receive five thousand dollars and then the city of Franklin is much like us with a flat fee of one hundred and fifty dollars. So I just wanted to come up with the court with that information, um, just to let you know kind of where everyone is today. Um, if, if this gets approved, uh, Franklin County's revenue for a fifty thousand square foot warehouse would be similar to that of Anderson and Shelby County. So while your agenda extract does call for an increase in the salary of, of the level three inspector, uh, eleven thousand and change, one project could be seven thousand five hundred right out of the gate. So, uh, there, uh, uh, there was a question earlier about, um, about, you know, the times that we're in. You know, as a planner, uh, I'm pretty to things that are coming in the future, not what's on the ground at the moment. I can't share this information with the court nor with the public. But there are things coming, uh, and that this, this is an opportunity for this government and this community to be business friendly and as we said before, a one-stop shop with staff we already have and are certified. Thank you.
Okay, Squire Moore?
Uh, Robert, is this a, uh, is this a fee that the state is already charging because otherwise it looks like that we're like more pleasing to development at two hundred over seven, seventy-five hundred? Is this a fee that's already being charged to these entities by the state?
Yes, sir. The fees are already being charged and currently Franklin County charges an additional two hundred.
Okay, so it's our, so we're not putting in something that's not already there?
Correct. Actually, our fee schedule eliminates the two hundred dollar fee.
Right.
So we don't charge the state fee.
But, but what you're saying, Robert, is, is that Anderson County, Shelby County and, uh, Georgetown, Scott County, uh, not, not Scott County, but, uh, Versailles, because they adopted the state fees, they're getting the money in addition to, right? Anderson County gets a seventy-five hundred dollars in addition, in a, be- because they adopted that fee.
Correct.
Right, and they're actually cheaper than us because we're adding the two hundred dollars on top of that that they're paying the state.
Yeah.
But we're not getting the state money.
Correct.
Squire Blackburn?
Thank you.
Okay, Squire Blackburn?
I, I've no, I noticed that, uh, Anderson Shelby is fifteen cents a square foot. Are our current fees at fifteen or are they at ten cents right now?
Uh, for, for non, uh, in outside of this, we're ten cents a square foot.
Okay, uh, what is, what is interesting is, uh, is, is, uh, Shelby County is one of the busiest counties, uh, along with Scott County and they, uh, eh, eh, in growth and, and they're charging this fee and they're act, they're actually making, it's not impeding their growth, is it? In either one of those counties. I know, uh, I know our growth is, is, we're, is moving in a positive direction, but Scott County's is out the roof and Shelby County's is out the roof too. And, and obviously these fees are not hampering their growth. Squire Muller?
Thank you Judge. Hey Robert, thank you again. Uh, I think we've heard, uh, since the last year, uh, the treasurer and you have all, uh, agreed that, uh, planning its own is not getting paid, uh, for the work that they're doing. And I know we've been super busy with the current budget, but I would like to throw up, I want to, even the next meeting, uh, really look at that and get that, uh, and get that going and get the fees, uh, where they need to be. So I don't know if we can put that on the agenda. Uh, I just feel like we just need to go ahead and do it. Thank you.
Okay. Robert, I ask you, you're working on that, I think anyway, aren't you?
Yes, sir. And, and on sheet one of the screen attachment, I've done a fee comparison on the residential side. This is sort of show where we stand with the same communities. Andrew, if you all have time to look at that briefly.
Uh, he took it down. Uh, Robert, we'll just wait, we'll bring it up by the next meeting. No, there it is. Okay.
So this is a scenario, uh, based on a two thousand, two thousand square foot single family home, based on the same jurisdictions. And so you can see that, uh, Franklin County is the lowest between the group. Um, and then so I've included the square foot cost, any plan review fees and the such. You can see that Anderson County is the highest along with Georgetown Scott County and then Versailles Midway Woodford County showing in second. So, um, and, and I agree with Squire Moore that, uh, I believe that we ought to not only review, uh, the building permit fees, but also the electrical inspection fees.
Okay, that's just one piece of it, Robert. There are several pieces, aren't there?
Yes, there are.
Okay. All right, uh, Squire, Squire Muller's asked and, uh, uh, if you would, you bring back, bring back, uh, a comprehensive look at that at our next, on the nineteenth of June's meeting. Squire Muller, you have another question?
Uh, ju- just one final thing on it and Robert, thank you again. I agree. I think we also need to pay attention to tax rates and where we are compared to the other counties to make sure things balance out. So I just wanted to throw that out there as far as, I know, um, people say we're a little higher, but we also have full-time fire, full-time police and trash pickup. So there's, there's more to that than just what meets the eye. So I'm just, just wanted to make sure that that gets put in the equation too. Thank you.
Great point. Thank you, Squire. It's a great, great point. Okay, are there any other questions, sir? If not, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. Uh, Greg Owens, thank you. Uh, the next item, thank you. The next item is approve a housing contract for property located at two nineteen Stepitown. Mr. Lewis?
Thanks Judge. Thanks Court. Um, this is just a flat renewal, same agreement that we have. We just, uh, like to put it on the agenda and renew it for another year. Uh, there are no changes.
Okay. Questions? S- Mr. Muller, Squire Muller?
Yeah, thank you Judge. Charlie, where do we at with, um, we talked, uh, in part committee and things about camera systems of being installed at Lakeview Park. Um, where are we at with quotes and things like that, please?
Um, I'm still working with Andrew on that. There has not been any, any, uh, installation on that. You know, I, we've basically stopped spending as, uh, as under the direction.
Yep.
But, you know, we can, we can pick that up and move forward with it if you'd like. I think it's a great idea.
I just, uh, I, I think we need to do that. I think we need to keep moving forward, maybe not actually spend it, but I think we need to know where we're at, you know, for the long haul. Um, so, you're.
Oh Judge, do you want me to, to dress up a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, well, if you remember Court, um, we have applied for a grant, um, with Anne Northus through, I believe Homeland Security. She can, can correct me if I'm incorrect on that.
That's correct, Andrew.
Yeah, but so, you know, we're, we're, I guess we're waiting on that. Um, you know, we've looked at different options, uh, and, um, you know, the option we submitted to, uh, to Homeland Security is not the most expensive option that we looked at, but, um, but it's still not cheap. Um, so, um, I mean, it, 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 you know, the, the project that, that, that we committed to Homeland Security is a pretty, pretty decent sized project with a pretty decent chunk of change associated with it. Hopefully we'll get our, uh, Homeland Security grant money. That would be fabulous. Uh, if not, you know, we may be able to install a camera or two, but, uh, you know, even going with the cheaper system, uh, you know, a, a, a big comprehensive system is gonna be, uh, you know, it's gonna be a quite, quite expensive project. So I, I think our hope is that the Homeland Security grant comes through. Otherwise it's, it's probably gonna be hard to, uh, you know, this next budget cycle, I, I would assume, so.
Okay, are there any other questions? Squire Muller?
Charlie, where are we? I know you're short hanging out because of everything. Um, we talked briefly about, uh, the gentleman who's in the house mowing potentially. Um, is that going anywhere as far as, because I know right now you're using a couple road department employees. Um,
Yes. We're, we're u- we're using them all. Um, the gentleman in the house, Mr. Carmen, he works at night and during the day, uh, kind of on a split schedule when he can. Uh, and we are currently using road department employees, um, when they are available and they come up and mow, uh, huge, huge help.
I saw him mowing, I believe it was last week, Charlie. He was on the, on a mower last week cutting.
Yeah, yeah. They've all been very helpful, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, payment of the bills, Susan Tamra.
You skipped treasurer's report.
I'm sorry, treasurer's report. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Treasurer's report.
Um, you can receive a copy of the current revenue and expense reports just through today's court bills. And you would see the, um, the revenue line items where we have, uh, excesses, which is a good thing, which were represented in, presented in the amendment. The, um, again, the preliminary forecast for the year end is good for, uh, ending in the black for, um, for all the, you know, the copy consolidated for all the funds. Um, other than that, I'm anxious for next week to come. I'm anxious for the future. Everyone, we all are. But in particular, we should have some information, I think, from the state regarding the, um, our assessments. Uh, they had a deadline, you know, a few more, and so I believe we'll have an update from the P V A next week. So we'll have some additional information, which, uh, hopefully be some good news.
Okay, any other questions? Treasurer's report, Squire Muller?
Okay, so Judge, I guess this may be for you. So as of, um, in a couple days, we'll have a spending freeze, is that right, for the rest of the fiscal year?
We, we've had it virtually in place all along. We just said at the end of the month, that, which is Monday, uh, we're gonna cut back. And so, you know, you've asked a couple of things to be spent and that's the sand and the cameras and all that. We're, we're not, we're not gonna do that unless it's imperative that we do it. So that's just kind of part of it, unfortunately. Squire Booth? Squire Booth, can't hear you?
Are we going to have a vote on the first reading of the, uh, budget?
We don't.
Twenty-one budget?
We don't vote on that. The first reading is just a, is just, I will read it. We don't vote on the first reading.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Susan, let's go to payment of the bills. Or Tamra? Okay, uh, not, don't hear anything on that. Uh, the next item is other business. And, uh, I want to bring up, uh, the public hearing and, uh, Andrew, I want you to get that, uh, for the people that are watching, the announcement for the public hearing on there. Uh, as you can see, if you wish to speak, provide testimony via Zoom or provide a written, written statement, the, eh, the, uh, email address is publichearing@franklincountyky.com. And you must, uh, email no later than five P M. on June the ninth. Uh, this is the Duncan Road Public Hearing Video Conference Public Hearing and it will be June the ninth, two thousand twenty at five P M. At the Franklin County Judicial Center. You will, you will need to wear a mask. If you don't have a mask, we will provide you a mask because Judge Minton has said anybody coming into the courthouse will have to wear a mask. Now, after today and then last week and the week before, it is very clear to me that two people's wifi are not, uh, could cause a problem. So, uh, I know that, uh, Squire Moore and Squire Blackburn have been coming down here to, um, to be part of the Zoom conference. It looks like we'll be able to have some room and some facilities in the courthouse. So I would ask that Squire Sebastian and Squire Tracy come to the courthouse uh, for the public hearing because, um, you, your wifi is evidently not, uh, as good at your location. So, uh, we will find a place for you. We will have a, uh, a laptop for you, uh, to use if not, if you're not in the courtroom itself. But we're, but I think it'd be better, it, it would make you feel a lot better if you were there in the courthouse, uh, as part of this, so you can be, participate in the public hearing. All right, uh, any, you all understand that? Squire Sebastian, Squire Tracy, do you underst- Squire Sebastian, Squire Tracy, do you understand why I'm asking for this?
Squire Muller has a question.
Yeah Judge, I just had to get, unfortunately, I had to get my two boys off of the internet, so their games were conflicting with my service.
Okay, Squire Sebastian, do you understand?
Squire Sebastian, do you understand?
I, I do, you know, I can't change my location here at my house. I'm in a river bottom, and it just doesn't work down here.
Okay, Squire Muller?
So.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
I was blabbing earlier, because I have a question about the bill. So if, when we can go back to that, I'm gonna ask a question about the bills.
Okay, I'll, I'll, well, let me, let me get to Squire Muller on this issue, and then I'll go back to the bills.
No, that, that's fine, Squire Sebastian, if you guys have.
Okay, Squire Sebastian, what is your question on the bill, sorry?
It's okay, I noted in the bills that we have a payment to the TIF attorney. Anybody know what they've been working on? We haven't been apprised of anything that they've been working on.
Squire, I mean, counselor?
Judge, when that was presented to me, I know that it was presented with an itemized bill, research document preparations and meetings with you. I've had a couple meetings, Squire, audio meetings with them in terms of setting up a process, et cetera, and I think the other ones have been with the judge, et cetera, and document preparation. So I did not, I submitted that out of my line item back to the judge executive, because they've been, he's been coordinating that with the city.
I thought you were, I thought you'd been in all the meetings that I've been in, Rick, and just trying to set up the process and where to, where to go.
That would be consisting of one meeting.
Okay, I, okay, it must have been two. It must have been a separate one on a Friday, I think maybe you missed that one then. So all this is.
Yes, I was gonna say, I didn't, I'm not trying to short-state the, the work and the discussions, et cetera, but a lot of that was document preparation and research and get ready to do that ordinance and stuff, Squire.
Okay.
That was the itemized bill that I saw. But the other ones are still pending until it gets back to court. So I'll have to defer back to the judge on that.
Remember that it's not to exceed 12,500, is it?
And I can send them a copy of the invoice if they would like it, because it has the detail on it.
Okay, so Tamra's gonna send you, if you want, a copy of the invoice that had, that details their work. Okay?
Would you like a copy?
She'll send it to everybody. Okay, any constitutional offices or department reports?
Judge, if I could just go briefly, I've got a couple of announcements to make kind of in conjunction with the courthouse opening, and I won't be, I won't delay for the, I won't delay the issue and get, that's all, get the real court.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
As you all have known, or if you've been, been watching it, you know, through the various spaces, we're getting ready, and I say ready more than being ready, for courthouse reopenings and to begin judicial proceedings, not only the remotely, like we've been doing them, which I was doing today during that budget meeting, doing video hearings, but live hearings, and have been attempting to coordinate with the judges, both district judges, circuit judges, and family court judges. We're gonna start that on Monday, which also means our office will be back open. There's some things that we're gonna try to do in conformity with the Supreme Court order to make sure that people can make appearances remotely. So if folks are getting charges, or they're trying to take charges, or they're complaint witnesses or officers, we're gonna be tweaking our notices a little bit different, so they contact their office to get the information to appear by Skype or by Zoom, or whatever the platform the court's using right now, to keep the numbers of people who have to come into the courtroom lower, because we're required to do video hearings. We're required to do video hearings almost exclusively as opposed to in-person hearings. In addition, we're gonna be scheduling office hours three times a week for folks who have business in the office, and then we'll be scheduling times when they can come in if they need to sign documents. Otherwise, we're gonna be trying to do a lot by email, mail, et cetera, just to make sure that we're on the same page as their neighbors in the judicial courthouse are doing, to minimize contacts, and we don't. The days of having 250, $300, 300 docket, in-person docket days are over for the foreseeable future. But I wanted to assure everybody that we're gonna try to do those as much as possible to make sure that the cases get processed out, they get took care, they get pushed on through. It may be that, that kind of like we're getting used to now, doing things remotely, that's what we'll continue to be doing, just, just on the, the office level, like the fiscal court's doing and other government building here. But come Monday, we're gonna be trying, I'd ask everybody to be patient as we're developing those systems, because we don't know how it's gonna work from one week to the other. We're gonna learn from them, we're gonna adjust, and then we're gonna change things and make sure it works to keep the community served and to keep our services and our cases moving forward. So I just wanted to let you know, we're nervous, and that's okay. We're gonna figure out what's going on, fix what doesn't work, and keep moving it forward. That'll start on Monday.
Okay, thank you, Squire Tracy?
Thank you Judge, just a quick question, you touched on the TIF attorney. There's a lot of interest in regards to the downtown redevelopment project. Would it be possible to update the court and even the community on your meetings with the TIF attorney? Is that possible? Thank you.
Not at this time, because there's really nothing to report on. This was nothing, just looking at the, at, he's gonna come up with a document, and this document will encompass the avenues that we will, that's what I'll present to you. There's really nothing to report. The document itself, and Rick, I think you can attest how he's talking about formulating this document, these are the, which will give us the avenues of the possibilities, and then we will decide at that point how we go with.
Okay, thank you Judge.
Okay.
Squire, I'd ask the judge at a couple of different points to bring it back to court for kind of an update when we first get, after you all approved the contract. As they go on, there's gonna be an opportunity for public hearings, there's gonna be an opportunity for public comment. At this point, or at least when I left it, it's just a, a luminous document preparations, not only document review for the plan, the partial plan that you all heard, but the ordinance approving the TIF district, et cetera, and then eventually maybe looking at either a joint or a several meeting between the two bodies to try to facilitate that. But this, where we were at when I last left it was, this is sort of the overview on the process, prepare the documents so we can get it to court, schedule the hearing, schedule the meetings, et cetera. That's the only thing that I've, I've known, that there's not been anything substantive because of the document preparation period.
And that's what they're working on.
And then that, and that's when you have the other discussions, and you have the other meetings, et cetera, like that.
Yeah.
But I, there's may have other, other, other details as to how it's getting played out between the parties.
I, I really don't, you're exactly, we just elaborated more on what we've, we've talked about. So there's nothing, he's coming up with a document, and I'm sure that's what a lot of this time has been, been with him, and so.
The invoice has been emailed to him already. I emailed them the invoice.
Okay, you've gotten the invoice, so that's, that's all. Good question, Squire, I promise you, I'll get you all the information wherever we can get it, get it to you.
Well, I can, I can promise the court too, there's no action gonna take place until such time as you vote on it with finality. So there's nothing, nothing binding on anything in terms of the prep work, because you're gonna have an opportunity to vote on the districts and have public comment on all of those things.
Squire Muller?
Judge, do you have any updates on the energy audits and things like that? I'm trying to choose a positive one.
Thank you, I like positive. I do know, I talked with Teresa Barton, Jake, are you on the line? Jake, Bana? Is he on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Teresa called me maybe Monday, sent me some pictures and said that they were out looking at the sewer line, testing the lateral lines at the jail. Do you have any, anything on that?
Yes, sir, I've been with, they were here last week one day, and actually the lines look pretty good on the outside. They're not, I'm not allowing them to come inside the building yet, but they can get in the basement and the outside, and then they were back today. Last week, they said the pipes look pretty good. I don't have a final report. Today, I've been with you all while they were here. So they looked at some lines coming out of the building today that are older. So I don't have anything to report there, because like I said, I was in here today with you all while they were here.
So Judge, do we have any idea when we might start hearing some numbers or anything from the whole audit report? Because, I mean, a month, a year, I don't know.
Well, if you can't get in the building, there's not anything we can do at this, at this point in time, and not until we can get in the building, so maybe, you know, optimistic, maybe a month, maybe a month.
Well, what about, what about the other buildings? You know, I mean, that's, they're not just working on the jail, correct? They look at other buildings, right?
They, yes, they are, but I think it, they do have, they do have some numbers, and we've showed you those numbers about the, about the other buildings. The jail is the big issue, that it's gonna be the sewer lines and water lines and everything else that's underneath the jail that we've said is gonna be, that's gonna drive this, this engine. So there, the report, Squire Blackburn, Squire Tracy, you remember that we, we have shared, when they came, the last time they came, they shared the other facilities, but this, the jail is the unknown entity right now. Squire Tracy?
Yeah, that's accurate, I think the jail's about 60 to 65% of the energy savings of this project. And I believe, you know, one good thing about the project is it can be done separately, so the jail can be done, and you don't have to do all the other buildings. The road department's been touched on, it was a very quick conversation per se. So I, I think they've been in and out of them, but the jail, you're looking at, you're looking at a lot of time inside that facility for, for the amount of the savings that we've, that we've been looking at.
Good point, thank you. Okay, Squire Blackburn, sorry.
Yeah, I, I agree with Scotty, I think also the understanding that I had, they want to try to get a clear view of the overall project and present it to us as one, and then we can pick and choose which direction we wanna go from there.
Yep, thank you, that's exactly right. Squire Moore?
If Jeff Hancock is on here, I'd love to hear an update on voting.
Jeff is not on here, I'm sorry.
Okay, I sent him a message, I didn't get a reply.
Okay, I'll see, Tamra see that Jeff sends you, what, you just wanna know the information on voting?
Well, the last time he spoke, he said that they looked into opening up some hubs out in the county for in-person voting, and I'm getting a lot of requests from people wanting that. I don't know how much of that he's gonna be able to do down there at the old Plankford building.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll have him to get, Tamra, have him, we'll have him get ahold of you, Squire.
Well, it's not just me, it needs to be, out there where everybody can find out what to do.
I know.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else on this agenda, on the work session? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the voting session, and clerk, will you call the robe?
Squire Sebastian?
Present.
Squire Blackburn? Squire Muller?
Present.
Say it again.
Squire Muller?
Present.
Squire Tracy?
Here.
Squire Booth?
Present.
Thank you, Squire Moore?
Present.
Judge Wells?
Here. Okay, would you please stand for the pledge? Squire Tracy, will you lead us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Not easy to do that.
I'm getting a flag.
Okay, first item on the agenda is authorization for approval of minutes from a regular meeting of May 15th, 2020. Squire Muller, motion seconded by Squire Blackburn, call the robe.
I really need him to say it. Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, please, please vote, do it vocally, if you would.
I think we could all turn our mics on to get through this process.
Why don't you, everybody just turn your mics on, if you would, and do this. Okay, thank you.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to receive the Franklin County Extension District's fiscal year 2020, 21 budget.
I move.
Seconded by, seconded by Squire Sebastian, would you say second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Squire Sebastian?
Second, second.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes. I'm gonna vote now.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
I am.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
They're like, oh, but yes.
Yes. The next item is the first reading of an ordinance relating to the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2020 and 2021, the vote will be on June the 19th, at our June 19th meeting. The next item is a first reading of an amendment to ordinance number five, 2019, relating to the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, the vote will be on June the 19th.
Squire Tracy raised his hand.
He was just wanting to say. The next item on the agenda is authorization to budget transfer in the amount of $75,000 for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
I move.
Moved by Squire Moore?
Second.
Seconded by Squire Booth, thank you. Discussion, call the robe.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Next item is authorization to approve an annual standing order preapproving certain recurring expenses.
Don't move. Party good.
Second, Squire Tracy, you gonna second?
He needs to say it.
Say it, please, say yes, second.
Second.
Thank you, okay. Discussion, call the robe.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes, yes, yes.
Miss only counts once, though. Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, all right. The next item is authorization to approve a memorandum of agreement between the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Cabinet Kentucky Department of Corrections and the Franklin County Regional Jail for roadside inmate work crews.
Don't move.
Second.
Who said second?
Blackburn.
Blackburn, okay. Discussion, call the robe.
Squire Sebastian? Squire Sebastian?
If you can't, you can't hear it.
Well, then I can't count it.
Oh, come on, Tamara.
Yes, yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is authorization to approve a contract with the Franklin County Health Department for providing prevented, no, we're gonna pull that, I'm sorry, we pulled that one off, I'm sorry. We're removing item number eight, the contract with the Franklin County Health Department. The next item is authorization to approve a memorandum of understanding with Columbia Southern University for learning partnerships on, learning partnership online program.
I move. Second.
Squire Muller, Squire Moore, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Squire Sebastian?
Squire Blackburn?
Again.
I think anytime we have an opportunity to create a relationship with a, an institution of higher education, and offer it more readily available to our employees at a discounted rate, I think it's a good thing.
Yes.
Okay, Squire Sebastian said yes, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
We got you. Thank you.
Squire Muller?
All right, Squire Muller?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Squire Tracy, I can't do this.
Come on, Tamara.
Squire Tracy?
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes, 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 yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. That's what happens when you meet for four hours, I guess. All right, then the next item is authorization to approve expanded jurisdiction program agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Housing, Building, and Construction.
I make the motion.
Okay, Squire, Squire.
I was waiting for Squire Blackburn, but I'll make the motion.
Okay, Squire Booth seconded. Discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes, so, so, I want to explain my vote here. This agenda item is somewhat unclear, and I want the community to vote, and I am concerned that the law that are impacted will due to the nature of the ill-defined, for me, voting because I'm not real.
I'm confused. I don't know what she voted on. I thought she said yes.
What, what is your vote, Squire? Yes or no?
So, so what I did was abstain from voting because this is unclear abstract item for me, so it's unclear what my next, they're likely voting being gone, so I'm abstaining from voting.
She's abstaining.
Because I don't know what it is.
Okay.
Okay, do I need to read the motion again?
No.
Okay.
Keep, keep going.
Okay, Squire Blackburn?
I vote no. Keep going.
Okay. I, I think expanded jurisdiction is something we've needed badly for a long time. I think in future meetings, we'll determine this fee schedule, and we'll also be able to determine raises at a later date if they are involved in this process, so I vote yes.
Okay, Squire Muller?
I am going to say I appreciate what Squire Blackburn said, and I appreciate finding the Zoney workloaders for three years. I am a yes, but also have concerns of workload. I think we need to talk about that, and make sure we're not overwork concerning people that we're moving forward as a community, so yes.
Squire Tracy?
Just a quick question for clarification. This is the third part, I guess the third piece to the puzzle. So obviously, if this goes through, the salary increase will go through, is that correct?
What you're voting on is to approve the expanded jurisdiction program agreement, so yes, that, and that also puts the building fees into effect and the salary that was previously approved.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is explain my vote. I'm not against expanded jurisdiction, and I believe that the county building inspector does a great job. I would like to have seen more accurate and up-to-date numbers. I also realize that the majority of county employees are being asked to do more with no salary increases. I can't seem to shake that there was discussions had by this body about road department mechanics and the thousands of dollars that they could have saved the county. Conversations that stalled over salary discussions. With that being said, I can't support the agenda item of this panel, I'm a no.
Okay. Squire Booth?
Well, I vote yes, and I would like to explain my vote. The fact that an inspector on level three has gotten the additional training needed to be at his level is a good reason why I'm voting yes.
Squire Moore?
I was, I was a little apprehensive about this, although I know it's very much needed. I was concerned that we were gonna go from 200 to 7,500 on a 50,000 square foot building, but when I found out that it actually lowers that cost because they're charging the, the state's already charging them the 7,500, and we're adding 200 to that, so it'll save them a little bit, and a good thing, I vote yes.
Okay, Judge Wells?
Squire Blackburn, I think you had the best comment of everybody. This is making us, helping us be business-friendly for developers, and I, and I think that is important, especially in this time of uncertainty and what is going on, and because I think this is huge in helping us move forward in our community, number one, in helping our businesses, which is hugely important, and number two, it will bring additional revenue in. I vote yes. Tamara?
Okay.
Next item is authorization to receive the Treasurers' report.
I move.
Do you have Lakeview Park?
I forget my, okay, somebody moved, he wasn't.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right.
I second the motion.
Okay, okay. We're doing the Treasurers' report, thank you, thank you, Tamara, hold on, we're doing the Treasury report, I skipped one, but we're doing the Treasurers' report, so everybody understand that, we're doing the Treasurers' report. Everybody okay with that? Would you, would you?
Yes.
Okay, call the roll.
All right, who made the motion?
Squire Blackburn made the motion, and Squire Booth seconded.
Squire Sebastian? Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Didn't hear you, Squire Tracy?
He's turning his mic back on.
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Sorry, skipped over this one. The next item is authorization to approve the housing contract for property located at 219 Stepintown Lane at Lakeview Park.
I move.
I second that motion.
Okay. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Yes.
Squire Muller?
I'm a yes, but I'd also like to look at the disposition, maybe the park committee in the future, reevaluate it, and see if we can make it better, so thank you.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Okay, Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. The next item is payment of bills. Are there any, anybody not accepting, want to take out any of the bills? What is that statement?
Is our motion to deny.
Is our motion to deny, thank you.
I think we're good, we're gonna pay the bills.
All right, we're hearing none of the payment of bills. Next item is authorization to adjourn.
I move.
Squire Muller? Seconded by Squire Tracy. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes, yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
I'm gonna say yes, but there are two things I want to say before we, before we close. Number one, please fill out your census, please fill out your census. I will say that Franklin County is at 69%, which is close to being one of the highest in the state. The city is at 64%, but still, that's 30% of people need to fill out their census, so don't forget to fill out your census, please, please do that, it means so much to our community. The next item, I want to speak from the heart, and last week, something tragic in my mind, and I believe in this community's mind, happened at the governor's mansion. We are a great community, Franklin County, Frankfurt is the capital, and there are certain things that happen, and we understand and we accept as part of being the capital, and those are protest. And all of us, all of us agree that that's part of being an American, is the freedom to protest. But to threaten somebody's life, to bang on somebody's window and threaten their children, their life, and hang them in effigy, that's not who we are in Frankfurt and in Franklin County, and that's not who we are in the state of Kentucky. And I, I call on all of us to pull ourselves together and stand up for what is right, and be against what is wrong. We all know what is right, and we all know what is wrong, and those things, when you do that on our capital ground, you're wrong. We have a great community, and I ask all of us, let's all be kind and work together. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.